6:03. Our call for meeting to order at 6:03. I have a pledge allegiance and I'm on my silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a redemptive justice for all.
Okay, we have approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. You don't have anything left?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, if we're discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, announcements. Bob is getting unbuttoned. I have announcements, the deliberative session is scheduled for Wednesday, February 4th at 7:00 PM at the Prospect Mountain High School auditorium. If necessary, a snow day is scheduled for the following night, Thursday, February 5th. Winter carnival is scheduled for Sunday, February 15th, from 8:00 till 4:00 down at the bay. Bob, would you like to?
This person.
Oh, okay, yes, one more. Excuse me. It was a great sadness that the Alton Police Department announces the passing of K-9 Zeke. He passed away peacefully at home on January 29th, 2015, surrounded by his loving family, K-9 Officer Chris Johnson and his wife Krista. This is a sudden and upsetting loss, as Zeke was a beloved member of our department and the Alton community. Zeke will be remembered for his seven years of dedicated service to the town of Alton and his 11 years as a faithful partner and friend to K-9 Officer Johnson. During Zeke's time with the department, he was instrumental in countless investigation and searches. Zeke was also known for the kind and gentle demeanor with community members. Zeke was often the center of attention in K-9 demonstrations all around the state. Zeke always managed to win over the crowd and put a smile on people's face. His passing is felt by the whole community, but he will never be forgotten. Now, Bob, we have you scheduled for an appointment. Would you like to come up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject is Lake Region Public Access and Membership Fee. I have some props here. Russ Bailey legitimately pointed out some years ago that only about a third of the townspeople were on cable, and yet all taxpayers were paying, what, $14,000 a year to get channels 24, 25, and 26 on. But now that's changed in that LRPA is also streaming. So if you're on internet, anybody, even in Florida, could tune in. Here is the Alton Selectmen's Meeting of October 18th, 1999. This is the first Selectmen's Meeting that was recorded and put on Channel 26. And I've since made a DVD of it so I can leave it with the historical society. But my mission here tonight is that the policy of LRPA is anybody can watch it, but only dues-paying members can originate shows on it. And this was a camera I was kind of born with, but last year I went into my savings account and got the latest and greatest high definition. So I am intending on doing quite a few things. I mean, we have the Winter Carnival coming up, we have the Barbershoppers coming to town, there'll be a Home Week Parade. Those are all kinds of things that I'd like to shoot and get on Channel 25. But unless Alton pays the dues, they won't play it. So my request is to please give it very favorable consideration, not just for my ego getting on Channel 25, but there used to be two other guys in town that would video. I have, one of them moved away, and I'm not aware of what the other guy's doing. But now that Peter Puan has retired from Wolfboro, he might be doing some video locally. So in summary, please look favorably upon what is the dues that they're looking for?
They're asking for $14,127.
They're back to $14,000?
Huh?
They're back to $14,000?
That was why there was an issue.
Yeah, 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 inflation, I mean, they were, they were going to greatly reduce it back when I was on the board. I'm sorry to see them go back up to $14,000. That does, if I were you, I guess I wouldn't think twice about it. So, but that's my case. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, now we move on to Selectmen's Committee reports. Have any committee reports? No? I will say we, the Old Home Week Committee met. They've got quite a few ideas for some events during the whole week. They're trying to fill in the whole week between our original Old Home Weekend and now the new Barbershops Weekend that's going to be the next. So they're trying to have a whole, full week of events and things. So very exciting what they're trying to pull. I think they're going to have some new ideas, they've got some new ideas of things that will happen. And I think it will be a great project this year for the town. Anything else? Town Administrator reports and updates.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just an update on Levy Park. In reference to the crosswalk, we had discussed it probably about a month ago, the state is insisting on certain things be done. The cost would probably be, including labor, and that would be the Highway Department, probably about $300 or $400 minimum in material and probably $600 in labor to get that cut into the, we'd have to have it like ramped down for the handicap access along with a plate, because when you do that, you're required to have a plate that tells someone that they're going into a crosswalk and everything. So I haven't had a chance to check on the overhead lighting issue to see if that would be an extra cost or if we have a street light down there that could be moved. So I'll check further on that. But, and that wouldn't include the cost of doing the crosswalk itself, but that would be done under the bid at minimum price along with all the other crosswalks.
Any questions? Okay.
The other issue, excuse me, is the auction of the town property. We have finalized pretty much the entire auction. We're, and actually in the next meeting, I'll have a final numbers for you. We had three properties that weren't sold. Two of those were sold, but the buyers pulled out. We do have their deposits that have been retained. One that we never sold at auction. And we have one that we're sending a contact out on to, to, in reference to the sale of their property, since it was done within a three-year period. So at the next meeting, I'll have a final number for you, but that number will be tentative depending on whether or not we hear back from that party that we sold their property on. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any report, any questions for Russ? Okay, open public input one. And our rules of public participation is on the back page of the agenda at the table. Do you enter?
Is it open?
Yes.
I'm going to start my clock here so I don't get shortchanged in about five minutes. My name is Jeffrey Clay, and I'm from Alton. And every time I show up here, it is with my most fervent hope that I'm going to find that you folks have resigned, but you still continue to show an unwillingness to step up to the plate, take responsibility for your poor actions as a selectman, and resign. I'm asking you to do that now. It just takes two words, stand up, admit I take responsibility for all my poor decisions, for my poor actions, for the continued violation of the citizens' rights here in Alton.
Point of order, is this a character assassination?
And resign. All you have to do is stand up and say, "I resign." That would be a good thing for you to do, to say, "I resign." You just stand up and say, "I resign."
We have a point of order at this time.
It's my understanding that this board does not pertaining to Robert's Rules of Order.
Okay, and you feel that he's violating the...
Do you or do you not go with Robert's Rules of Order?
Libelous statements?
We won't answer the question, right?
Is the board feel that the comments currently done as a libelous...
The public needs to hear you do that.
Discussion?
I've got to stop my tone here.
All in favor of closing down public input at this time because of the inflammatory statements made by Mr. Clay? Say aye? Aye? Opposed? Thank you, public input's closed.
Integrity is the quality of being honest and having strong moral principles, moral uprightness.
You are done, Mr. Clay.
It is generally a personal choice to uphold oneself to consistently moral and ethical standards. Integrity also demands knowledge and compliance with both the letter and spirit of the written and unwritten rules. To this end, this board is morally corrupt. It is bankrupt.
He can sit in any audience.
It is without integrity. We citizens, we citizens pay the price.
Public input is closed.
You want to take your hands off me, please? Take your hands off me, please. Take your hands off me, please.
You've been asked to leave.
Take your hands off me, please.
Are you going to stand up and leave?
We citizens, we the citizens pay the price in legal fees for your representation. Two little words, resign.
Am I under arrest? Come on, you're going to be if you don't listen to me.
Stand up and resign now. Alton deserves better. Audacity is defined as boldness and daring, especially with confident, arrogant, disregard for laws and rules and policies.
Mr. Clay, you've been warned a third time now.
Continued violations cannot be tolerated by the public.
Public input has been closed.
Stand up, take responsibility for your willful violations of the rights of the community. Resign, do it now. Two little words, stand up and resign. How can you possibly hold...
Okay, now you are under arrest. Come on, come on. Do we have any other public...
He hit the panic button, so he has some, he was trying to get back up.
Yeah, he was.
Okay, yeah. Any other public input? Yep. Could you just move that over, Bob Pauls? That'd be fine. Thank you.
I would just like the record to show that one citizen is very happy with the select people, and you don't have to stand up and resign on my account. I like what you're doing. I've just been running down the agenda, and I see new business. There's a senior center, a tent purchase, and also a MetroCast letter. I think I need more on that, although I just looked at the package, and I guess that's taken care of. But on the tent purchase for the senior center, it's not the kind of tent that I had in mind. I envisioned eventually that the senior center, community center, would become our voting place, to be much more convenient than Prospect Mountain High School and the long walk-in and stuff. But one of the reasons I heard, no, we can't do that, is that at the Prospect Mountain High School, they have this nice overhang for all the politicians to stand outside and do their electioneering as you enter, and that's not available at the senior center. So I'd like to see a three-sided, a three-sided tent that you can put outside where the politicians can do their last-minute lobby. And this tent...
Mr. Chairman, can I respond to that? I can remember standing outside of the fire station on many a cold and windy day campaigning. I don't think that's ever been discussed here as a reason why we can't move it.
Is it big enough?
I think traffic flow may be an issue.
Yeah. How about if we, could we actually make two polling sisters, or would that be a nightmare?
You have to have the moderator.
Yeah.
I don't think so. I don't know exactly what, I can't tell you what the tent exactly is going to be, Bob, but...
From reading in here, it's a big, four-sided tent that would go over on the side patio. And that wouldn't do the job to protect the politicians and their last-minute urging of your votes, so that's my suggestion on that. And I see the MetroCast letter, it's just that they're notifying you that they won't be doing 24, 25, and 26 anymore, so it'll be it.
Thank you very much, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Any other public input? I see no one else. Okay, we'll move on to approval of the Selectmen's Minutes. We have January 7th.
Motion to approve the January 7th Workshop Session 1 as presented.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Motion to...
Aye. Okay, make your, okay, make your motion.
Motion to approve the non-public workshop session of January 7th, opening numbers 2. I would like to open number 3, but I believe there needs to be a correction made to the wording, so I'd like to, I don't know if we should table these minutes and bring them back?
I would, I'd like to table. I'd leave, yeah, leave 3 sealed for now.
Leave 3 sealed and then bring them back and...
If you, yeah, if you feel there's a wording issue.
Okay.
Okay, so we're not going to table, we're just going to do number 2.
Open number 2.
Open number 2.
What about number 3?
That's where the wording...
That's where we...
Oh, okay, okay.
Review them. I think we have, no, we don't have tapes, but I think we ought to review number 3 for the wording. And we can do, well, I...
Something unclear there that I'm missing?
Well, not, I can't, I can't discuss that issue, non-public works, non-public session, unless it's in another non-public session. Catch 22 here.
Catch 22.
So we're opening number 2, and they're going to revisit number 3. Is the motion? No, is it, is it, this camera's going, get the camera going. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye? Public session 2 of January 7th.
Motion to approve Public Session 2 of January 7th as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Motion to approve the Public Session 1 Minutes of January 14th as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Non-public workshop session, January 14th.
Hang on.
January 14th.
Yep, 14th, non-public.
Motion to approve the non-public workshop session of January 14th, opening numbers 3 and, that numbers 2, 3, and 7.
Number 5? Number 5?
Oh.
What's your input on number 5, Russ?
I would strike the words, anything following issues. I would discuss, I would strike starting at "on" and pick it back up at, sorry, oh, and "asked." So, striking...
Okay, so number 5, strike after the, after issues?
Yep.
And...
Through process.
And to process.
That would be my amendment.
Everyone to stand? So we're opening 2, 3, amending 5, and, did you have 7? 7?
Mm-hmm. 7.
Okay. Anyone to stand for what we're doing? Motion?
Is there a second?
Oh, I'm sorry, a second. I thought I already did it.
Okay, I don't want, I want to make sure you all know we're cutting.
Yeah, I know exactly.
Okay, we got 2nd. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Public session, January 14th, public session 2.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. We have Tuesday, January 20th.
Motion to approve January 20th Public Hearing Regarding Road Reconstruction as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye? Opposed?
Motion to approve January 20th Public Workshop as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All business, review the 2015 warrant, Article 1 Budget. So we all seen these, I don't think there are any changes.
Now, the, this is the new format. It's in your book.
This is what we'll have tomorrow night?
Well, that's what the public will have.
Oh.
Okay, it's that one. Now, your worksheets are our old format off of our spreadsheet, because we couldn't...
The book you gave us last week.
Right. But this is a new format as required now by the state, that we have to input.
And I would say we might just want to use this one. If you recall, there were some issues on Saturday, people were trying to make amendments, and they would say by line, and it was different what...
Oh, because the spacing's a little different.
Right. It was different what they had on stage, so it wasn't for people...
Because the school had their old one and a new one?
Right. So we might want to have what they have in the audience to make it easier.
Now, we've got, this is a handout for tomorrow night. We have the default budget, which is also a new form. And one of the things about that is, is that it's got question marks. I mentioned this to you this before.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
On all the lines. And those are not, because there's something wrong, it's just the cue system that if you're in the computer and you want to look up what those lines represent, you just click on that question mark, and it tells you what lines are included in that category.
So it's a link.
Yeah, but they print it out with it. And so it's the, we're locked into that.
Is there a line, is there a line under the question mark? Is it underlined?
It's in a little circle with a question mark.
I'm thinking, a lot of people probably would just recognize that as a link.
Yeah.
People are computer illiterate.
And then there'll be the MS 737. Now, it's no longer the MS 7. They changed the number, changed the format a little bit. We'll have a copy of that. And we started making copies of all of the, the road reconstruction, so I don't know if we wanted to talk at all more about road reconstruction. I have the handouts that we had for the public hearing. And right now, we're up to 60 copies, and it's a lot of paper, especially those big sheets. It's all with a color and, which we pay extra for on our machine. But if anybody can tell me for sure how many people are going to show up...
It's possible, I nearly have to share.
So I can, we'll still run more tomorrow. I mean, I've got 100 of the other black and white. Well...
Well, it certainly hasn't been 60 people in a number of years, so...
Yeah.
And that wasn't for the school.
Maybe, I was going to say, maybe you hold on to them, to somebody ask more, I don't know.
All right, well, we'll run a few more, but I, you know, it's, it's just, at some point, it becomes a waste of money running them through.
Well, we can always, like Dave said, we can have people share and tell them that there'll be copies available at the town hall before the voting day.
And were you going to put a link on the computer?
Well, yes, we're, we've had a few issues with the website, which hopefully is going to get resolved shortly. But yes, we'll have it set up so people can go in and look at all this. The warrant and the budget and all that are already on the website. If you go in on it, you can find all those things.
They don't have a PowerPoint screen at the school.
Yeah.
They do.
It was very hard to see at the, at the school, because it was off to the side over to the aisle way over.
Oh, that's the one that got turned off.
And it kind of bleaches out, and the lights in there.
Yeah.
Where I was sitting, but...
Yeah. I didn't even know.
Well, there's enough time, I think, between the deliberative and when they vote for people to be able to come into the town hall and request a copy?
Yeah, and next, maybe make that noted, notified right off, and let everybody that read it.
Sure.
But I think we need to probably discuss this in every meeting, the road reconstruction between now and elections. It's an uphill battle to get people to approve a 60%. But hopefully the message can get out there that if we don't do this, we're going to be further and further behind on getting our roads maintenance done and road repairs done, so. I don't know if there's anything else that anybody needs for tomorrow night.
Do you have our, do you have our copies of the books?
Yeah, you had my...
You have your book.
I'm going to give you my book.
Did you give it back to me? Okay, then it's in my room.
Yeah, right.
Let me look for it after the meeting.
It's the one with the handwriting you can't understand.
Yeah, I'll have extra copies for everyone if, as needed.
Any other issues or questions about the, about the deliberate session, tomorrow night's deliberative session? Okay. I think it's going to be a learning session for me. Anybody want to take bets when we'll get done? No? I'm guessing 10. 10? Okay, 10 o'clock.
Depends.
I'll take that bet.
It all depends.
And what exactly are we doing with this? I mean, what do we do other than, are we going to post this, or what, put it in the paper?
I don't know, you tell me.
Well, I've never done it, so I don't, I've never, I've never seen any proclamation.
I, we, to put this in the paper, we would hope they would do it for free.
Yeah.
Because to put this in the paper, the full length, we're talking $300 or $400, and I can't really recommend that.
No.
Why don't we
We could put it on the website.
Okay.
We could post it around on the town hall.
Yeah.
Library.
Yeah. Museum.
We could just give it to the Laconia chapter of the Society for the Preservation and Encouragement of Barbershop Quartet Singing. And then they can do with it what they please.
Okay. Do you need additional signatures on this?
Right, I do need additional signatures. To see if it's in this pile.
You know, the other thing, maybe we could give copies to local businesses. Maybe they would post it. Yep. I'll Okay, Jonathan's doing this. I was going to say the whole weekend, but I don't know how we tie in with them. Do we, in, in the area, which breaks away from this a little bit, down by the bay, do we have anywhere where we could post things? You know, like a little waterproof?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes. Someplace else.
By the town dock, there's one.
And isn't there one on the, on the side of the Gray Road? The old community, what do they call it, community center now? I think there's one there, right?
Yeah, there is. There's that one. It's freestanding.
It'd be the chamber at the chamber.
The chamber uses. There might be one at the chamber. I have to, I'm not sure if we have one right in front of our building or not, or our side of the building.
I'm not sure we want to post it too early.
Pardon?
I'm not sure we want to post it too early. It'll start to get yellowed and
Wait, the 13th?
Well, no, I was thinking
Sorry, I'm only kidding. Well, do we want to read this at the deliberative session? I mean, you've got to bet for the $10, for the 10 o'clock. I mean, that will, you know, make it a little longer. No, no. I don't know if they've ever read one at the town, at the town meeting, or they were, I don't believe I've ever heard them read one of these at the town meeting, but I suppose, at the deliberative session.
There is no rule of some that covers that. It really is up to the moderator and the people in the audience about how much additional stuff they want to have, other than what was warned for the meeting.
Okay, I'll work it in somehow. No, you know, with the deliberative session, come to a certain time, I'm going to have to go, I'm going to have to leave. Only because, well, I've got a personal issue where I have to be in Manchester at 6:30 in the morning. Oh, you'll leave tonight, you mean? This meeting? No, tomorrow night. I have to be at 6:30 in the morning in Manchester Okay. on Thursday morning. Okay.
Okay.
I'll explain to you what that is afterwards. Right, okay. All right, we'll work on something, maybe Mac Northridge. Anything else on that one? Review, approve the grant for the DWI, DUI patrols. This is our regular DUI grants. Regular ones we usually have every year.
Do we have to approve them separately?
There's only two. It's just one, isn't it? It's called one. Just one, isn't it?
Is there two of them up there? Because usually with the DWI enforcement, there's another one called speed enforcement.
We did that last meeting.
Last meeting, okay, then this was just this one grant, then it's just the regular DWI patrols?
Yeah. Well, in other states
It's just the one.
In other states, they call it DUI, right? Probably that's why it's got the DWI DUI.
Yeah.
Yeah, just different state terminology.
Okay, motion to approve the highway safety project grant for Alton DWI DUI patrol. Total amount of $7,488.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Okay, I passed. New business, land use items, recommended time of session. Will you do that one?
Motion to approve the land use items dated January 22nd. Number one, 2014 abatement request on map 34 lot 33-36 for $183. Map 41 lot 48, the amount of $690. Map 8 lot 23, an amount of $61. Map 8-3-1, the amount of $237. And map 46-15 for $1,143. 2014 administrative abatement. Map 34 lot 33-165 for $28684. Map 34 lot 33169 for $1,29123. Map 34 lot 33-168 for $2,03582. Map 34 lot 33-167 for $79631. Map 65 lot 17-18 for $5644. We have 2014 veterans credits from map 2 lot 1-3 for $500. And 2014 revised solar exemption, map 12 lot 67-6 for $17,808.
Are these all elderly exemptions, or what are these?
No, they're all different.
Abatements are when you give back money, because maybe they applied for a review of the property, and then the veterans credit is they have to meet a certain requirements certain years. I think it's years, isn't it, and where they served, too?
Yeah, there are certain requirements for the time of service, when they served, and such.
The solar exemption is one that the town passed a long time ago. People take advantage of solar heat.
Yeah, that one I understood.
Yeah. And three.
In addition to that, motion to approve the veterans tax credits and elderly exemptions as presented on the following two pages.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can we sign this, this page tonight?
Yep.
Okay, okay, before we leave, we're going to sign this this paper, okay? So, right, okay. Senior center tent purchase. I have a letter
Yeah, the, this is from the senior center committee. And it would be purchased from the donations that they had under their fundraiser. And it would be used primarily in the back over the patio, with the idea that it would be a lot more usage out there for the seniors and other events. But it wouldn't be just used by the seniors. Anybody else using the building would be able to use it also. The other thing would be is if we had any kind of special activity, a town activity, like Old Home Day, or Memorial Day, or anything like that, we could take the tent from there and place it someplace else in town for a town function, because it will be, belong to the town.
What kind of tent is it?
It's one of those party-type tents that you see where people will rent for weddings and stuff, the real heavy duty with the sides.
So the sides can come off and
Yes.
I was picturing an army tent for some reason.
Oh, no, no, no.
Kind of this used, huge army tent. Now, what about liability, insurance liability for this?
It would just be included under our umbrella automatically.
And if we, okay, I guess it would be different, wouldn't it, if it's located on this concrete, that kind of, versus moved around? Is that should we talk to our insurance company about that, out of it?
Well, yeah, we can talk with them and make sure there's no issues. The main thing is if we did move it someplace else, we'd want to make sure it was properly installed and everything. That's the key.
So we may have to have like a instruction manual type thing to make sure it's secure and all that, right?
That's the only problem I have, is the storage about it, how it's put how it's put away. Because they milled it real quick. I was wondering if you'd be better off to look into one of those that come off the building, you know what I mean?
Oh, the awnings?
The awnings, like.
I think you want, I think they're talking about more could be moved around.
Yeah.
Multi-purpose. I think, I would think we could have some kind of instruction manual to make sure that doesn't happen about the mildew. And then ask the insurance company some guidelines.
Yeah.
All right.
It's got to be taken care of very well.
Yes.
Else it'll rot.
Yeah, you can't put it away wet. Okay, so they're requesting approval from the board to use some of the remaining private donation funds to purchase this tent. Do we have a motion?
Some moved.
Any further discussion?
Second.
Need a second?
No second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Oh, abstain on that one.
You oppose?
What's that?
You oppose, you said?
Not oppose, just abstain.
Okay, abstain. One abstention.
I like the ball. No more about it.
Okay, okay, three, three aye and one abstention. Landfill compliance?
This is the annual contract that we have with our engineer who monitors the test results, prepares the annual report. Is in contact with the state. He coordinates all the activities with the state, responds to any letters and issues they have about any of our test wells and such. And he's also right now working on setting up a meeting, hopefully in the near future, on a drainage issue out there that we talked about last year. So this is really very necessary that we have the engineer online working with the state to make sure that we're fulfilling our requirements on the landfill closure and monitoring. And so the initial contract for the basic items is $9,000.
Okay, so do we have a motion to enter, continue the contract for $9,000 with CAD?
It's all moved.
Could I, sorry, could I add on there to authorize me to sign?
And authorize Russ to sign?
It's all moved.
What, what was the, what was the cost of the contract last year?
I'm thinking it was around 12, because we had some extra things we had to do. And a year before that, we had the monitor, new, two new monitoring wells included, and they were included in the initial contract.
He did a lot of work on the, the Dahl property, right?
Yeah, he did all that work.
And this is the same company?
It's the same company been using for probably the last six, seven years at least.
Yeah.
The numbers are starting to go down a little, aren't they?
There's a, there's a slight trend. Yeah, it's not great, but
At least it'll start heading in the
Right.
Within 10,000 years, we ought to be okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ananmas? Poll? Petition? New Hampshire Co-op? But even Mac, Mac the Co-op showed up at seven?
Six.
A six?
Six forty-six.
Forty-five? Poll petition with the New Hampshire Electric Co-op.
Did somebody request this? They don't generally decide to
Uh, what's driving them to do it? I can't answer that, but this is from the electric company. This is pretty much, there's a lot of work they're doing on Drew Hill. They must have some reasons why, I'm not sure.
Just the new poles.
New poles?
New poles, just
Oh, new poles. Well, quite a few of them, huh?
14 of them.
Just replacing the lot?
Yeah, they just replace the line, making it a little taller, probably going up to a three phase.
Don't get more policy like that.
We're getting excited.
Okay.
Motion to approve the Electric Co-op Poll Permit License Number 3587 from Drew Hill Road.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Metro Cash Letter?
We kind of covered that in the appointment with Mr. Longabow. Basically, is that as of the third, March 20th, they'll no longer be broadcasting anything that's sent. You'll still be able to get on those channels, but you'll just hear the other towns. You won't see anything from Alton.
I think the public ought to know that they can see these broadcast now on the
They can go onto the town website and watch any of the meetings.
I think we had a big discussion one night on that.
Yeah. The, going back to Mr. Longabow, is there any reason why we couldn't put his videos on the website? If he took videos, could we post them? I mean, if we found them acceptable, obviously, post them on his website, so the
I think if it's a town function, it's a town event.
Yep.
But when you get into non-town events, I think we need to have a lot of discussion and legal review.
Yeah, I would agree.
Yep.
Then you'd have to be buddy coming in.
Okay, so the board has decided to not participate with them anymore. Is there any change? Anyone wants to make a motion to change what we decided we're going to do? We've had input, we've had input now that we wanted, and we said we weren't going to pay for this anymore.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yes.
Anybody want to bring it up that we change our view?
I haven't.
No.
No, okay. Special events application, Winter Carnival?
I motion we approve the special events for the Alton Business Association for the Winter Carnival on 2/15/15 from 8 to 4.
Any further discussion?
I have a question. It says that the Alton Police Department's going to be providing security. Have you been approached to provide security?
I, I got an email the other day from They have been in contact with me, and typically what happens each year is that we, you know, post a little extra coverage down in the bay. I mean, the term providing security is a, is a kind of a misstatement. We're, we're going to be there in our, our general duties as law enforcement officers. We will provide some extra coverage to ensure that, you know, the event is safe and orderly, and also make sure that there's no parking, trailer issues, things like that, congestion or hazards. So we will, we will monitor that. That's typically what we do unless there's some change in the board. I mean, we do, we've done the Winter Carnival typically similar to, not quite as much involvement, but similar to the way that we participate in Old Home Day for the, for the town.
Thank you.
So do we have a second? A mark?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public input two? You have no public? I've got something, maybe I should have brought it up earlier. Okay. And I guess this would, I don't know if this goes to you, or it's a request for handicap parking signs. Okay, so it's a request for two signs? I guess from what I can understand, the area is actually a, a town-owned, it's the town-owned parking space across from the school. Okay. And there's it's marked on the concrete, but in the wintertime when the concrete's covered, you know, people use it because they can't see it, so. Okay, let's put that on the next agenda, and we'll put this Okay, let's put that on the next agenda and we'll put this in our packet and can't do much anyway with the frozen ground.
That's a bad thing, because we're supposed to put some no packing signs around that corner. Because the cars are starting to park there.
Where church street comes down?
Right across from the insurance company, over in here.
We're talking about two...
Okay, this is by the school.
Yeah, I'm just saying that we got another...
Oh, it's another place?
Other problem there. Have you noticed that, Chief? Across from the insurance company where we did all the work, the cars are starting to park on the right inside.
Yeah, they park all the way along.
Yeah.
Get a, get a cost of the signs too.
They have noticed they've been parked in there. It doesn't really seem to provide a crazy hazard. It depends on how big the vehicle is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Versus a compact car.
The plan calls for those parking spots.
I got a boat and a trailer there the other day. It was footy bleak.
Yeah, the plan called for those spots to be eliminated.
But if, if it becomes a hazard, we'll have to post, have to do something.
Now, this is right across from the...
Right. We eliminated those two spots.
So when you come around, you know, that boat would stick up.
Because there wasn't enough, because we got to redo that.
Yeah.
Insurance anyway in the spring.
Okay. Okay, so we'll put on that on the next agenda and find out how much the cost of those are. Okay?
Good.
Anything else?
Is this going to the paper?
Yeah, it's a press release, yeah.
Okay.
This one, the press release, correct?
The one on Zeke.
Yes, that already, it actually hit this morning.
Okay.
It hit this morning and we posted, sent that thing on Facebook as well.
Okay.
Just for general knowledge and was viewed by 6,400 people.
Nice.
Wow.
And we got 115 comments, all very positive. Very good show.
All right, I'll, I'll move that we enter into non-public session pursuant to RSA 91-a, colon, 3, Roman numeral 2, A personnel, C character reputation, and E claims litigation. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Dave?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Marcus?
Sydney?
Yes.
Boring. Aye. Thank you, we're in non-public.